Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Nebraska State Board of Education Work Session. The April State Board Work Session will now come to order. Denise, please call the roll.
Lisa Frike?
Here.
Patsy Co. Johns?
Here.
Rachel Weis?
Here.
John Whitzel?
Here.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Present.
Patrick McPherson?
Present.
Commissioner Bloomstedt?
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. I'd like to remind board members to engage their microphones before speaking and to turn them off when they are done speaking. And please, turn off your cell phones. Thank you very much. Commissioners, report and agenda overview?
Yeah, so kind of a normal routine. The pink slip that you have, if you have any items consent agenda that you'd like pulled up, please go ahead and put those in the box over there by Scott Summers. As far as a report on rules, you will see that in the attached, you'll see rules, we got rules, I'm not getting my screen to work on the way here. Rule nine is up for hearing, or we've got a hearing draft approved on rule nine. We have also rule 21 that was signed, and appreciated the governor's kind of publicity of rule 21 being signed. And then still several rules that are waiting, the governor's signature and final approval, rule 71, 72, 23, 15, and 24, all over there. So, I do hope, we're kind of waiting on all of those. I've talked with Cheryl Wolf over at the governor's office and asked kind of what the next order of that business is, and given legislative session, they're a little bit wrapped up on those fronts, so I do hope we can advance those rules here pretty soon. So, that's what I have on the rule report. I did want to also give you an update, kind of a, I guess, I'll call it a quick update on efforts going on around safety and security from our last, since our last meeting, I guess, and some of the board conversation on kind of what our role is, and thinking through that, I think, and I at least made you aware probably through email updates or otherwise, the opportunity to work with the governor some where the governor has asked for a, really three subcommittees to do some particular work. One led by me as the commissioner with education interest in particular around school safety, a second group led by behavioral health, folks from DHHS, so that conversation is just getting underway with a group identified from all over the state. And then one around, certainly around the law enforcement side, being led by Colonel Bolduc from the State Patrol. I haven't heard reports on each one of those other committees, but I can tell you is, we gathered up the committee of folks, and probably around 15 or 16 different folks, just on a phone call, kind of a precursory activity, planning for a meeting actually next week with a group of representatives from all over the state. We ran a list of folks by the governor's office, and then they did kind of final approval on that. I did ask that we include John Whitzel as board president on that group, so he was able to sit through that conversation. We do, I won't get everyone's name off the top of my head, but we have a board member, a superintendent, but really try to dive down into principals and school counselors and a school nurse, a school resource officer, and try to identify a broad set of folks that'd be involved in that. Joelene Palmer and then also Michelle Borg from our team are kind of helping staff that particular work. The conversations have really been around the framework that we shared with you before, that Joelene had shared about, you know, really that prevention and preparedness side, as well as response and recovery. And the nice part is, I think, in the build out of that, all of the groups are following essentially that protocol, so I think you'd be proud of the work that certainly Joelene has put into place across the state. And the number of contacts that I think have been established through that work is impressive, but there's a lot. I think, I think one of the, kind of the first and kind of obvious things is the importance of communication amongst all these groups, and that really has been the focus, I think, so far of the effort of the three groups. What I will tell you is, each group roughly was to name a set of folks, and then we'll have probably about five representatives from each of those different groups come together, I don't know what to call it, supergroup relative to the conversation and then the crosstalk between those groups. What we are planning to do in our group is really create, from this framework, what are the, what are the other elements of opportunities for us to continue those conversations with the right? And each of the representatives on our group will actually be contributing to that framework. And so next Monday will be an important meeting. I don't know how many meetings we'll get as an opportunity before we pull the bigger group together, kind of, the governor's interest was making sure that we were able to do that sometime after session got done. So I'd expect in the next six weeks or something, we'll probably pull the cross-group membership together as well. So, with that, John, did you want to add anything from your observations?
If I could, if I could just make a few brief points in regards to what I observed in regards to, we had, what was really dignified about this group was, they were all diversified in regards to various backgrounds. We had, if you will, resource officers from school, from superintendents to behavioral specialists. So, it was a wide variety of people that attended. But there were some central themes that I'd like to pass on to y'all that really came across. And number one was, in regards to a response protocol, they stressed, every member there stressed there needs to be a common language protocol in regards to a response. Various different organizations are creating their own, if you will, response, and they really didn't, were not in line with maybe a local school district's alignment. So they want to come to a one, single language response protocol. And they also mentioned that school safety is to do with relationships within the building to include the whole community, which we all know. And also, they dove into what they call a statewide report line, which allows students with concerns that can be sent to the local schools, in regards to if a student is having a problem, that school will know about it through various agencies. And Superintendent Blaine McCain from, let's see, Westside, he probably brought it up the best in regards to what we need to do is coordination of law enforcement training, inclusion of, and emotional disabilities needs to be included, specific certification and policy recommendations. But this one, if you will, Chad, the resource officer stated that in regards to some of the training taking place are conducted by resource officers or individuals that may not be first responders. Everyone has a different protocol. Teach and coordinate training with law enforcement agencies. For example, state troopers are normally the first responders on an accident, or is not the first responder, but it's usually a local sheriff, police, or resource officer itself. But they, needs to use exercise threat assessment checklist. Everybody needs to be on the same checklist when it comes to a response. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, and for either of you, but was there representation from any of the Native American schools there? Because, you know, we've had those conversations, there's a different set of needs there, and I think this is a great opportunity to ensure that their needs are addressed as a part of the process as well.
Yeah, in fact, I mean, I'm on the group, and we didn't have anyone specific on that, but we actually had that conversation and continued to have that conversation around that different need. I had that very conversation actually with the governor and the colonel from State Patrol because of the importance of that notion of first response and how that works. And we talked FBI and others.
Right, so is the FBI in?
Not in this yet, no.
Because that is the first, so for the native schools to not have a federal presence, I think, could be a disadvantage.
But it might, it's not in our group, but I don't, I think the other group actually does, so that's the challenge.
Does, so ensuring that there's that check and balance on behalf of those schools would be great.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. The other thing, as John was chatting about that, all of the different groups started with kind of the same baseline of some information that was kind of agreed to and shared with all those different groups. So, it's really the beginning of a conversation. I did want to highlight, because also I believe Senator Baker had introduced legislative resolution or interim study on school safety as well, and so I believe he's worked some with NCSA, and there'll be kind of a summit this fall that will be the conclusion of that. I've recommended back to the governor's office the opportunity maybe to use that summit as a, as a kind of a place to bring all of the findings together and hopefully have a solid package of things to present if there's legislation, or if there's things relative to our rules and regulations, that that really could come together in a solid conversation. So, so that's our hope. Like I said, we've really had one hour of meetings so far, and there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of opportunity there. But what I, what I think is important, and I want, I guess I want you to know based on our last conversation, and I think it's, you know, the amount of resources that go in to school safety, and I keep, you know, when I go around the state and I hear folks talk about, oh, you know, these incidents, I don't want people to be in a moment of fear all the time around safety. If you really go to schools, you'll find that they're extremely safe places for students to be, and it's these unfortunate events that draw some attention to are the things that we could do better. And I, you know, watching the scene, I think nationally, is also really important because after-school shootings and the response is actually as important as well. If something bad happens, how do we respond to those circumstances? How do we ensure there's sufficient counseling? And sometimes we think so much about the students, but I also think about the staff at schools. And so, I just think it's a very complex issue for a lot of different reasons, and what I do appreciate, I think in these conversations, it's recognizing that complexity so far, and I think that's going to be an important part of the ongoing dialogue. So, so thank you for letting me do that update.
I had a question from you, John, or Commissioner Bloomstedt, or Scott Summers, about the law. In Nebraska law, can the security officer have a gun in the school or not?
Yeah.
Yes, and is that happening in any of our 244 districts?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I didn't know that. And then the second question I had is, if someone is a perpetrator of a terroristic event, mass shooting, is the law different for that person than a general murderer? I mean, I know that terrorism is a subject under the law, and I didn't know if in your discussions you'll be discussing that.
Yeah, I don't know if something like that'll come up, but I think what you're talking about is creating extra penalties around school scenarios.
Yes.
And we have that, so I think the comparison that I could come up with is drug-free, right? So there's higher penalties for certain things due to, those types of recognitions, and I think it's a great, great point. I don't know, I don't know if that will come up.
And John, you talked about common data.
Yes, ma'am.
Will that go in what Dean Polkers always talks about, the common student identifier between departments? So, if there is someone highlighted as potentially needing support, early support and intervention, sounds like prevention's good, will those numbers be shared confidentially in a secure manner, those kids?
It was brought up to get that information. Legally, I cannot answer that, but they wanted to get the information back to the school as soon as possible.
You don't know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
But I do think when you start to look at it, there's a whole bunch of areas of that. Some of it ends up being the data sharing around prevention, sometimes it's data sharing around, but I kind of compare it to thinking about almost concentric circles around whatever harm there might be, or danger there might be, or potential problem that there might be. And you start thinking about it, it's like, if you don't share among those concentric circles that there's some potential danger, then it's not, it's not a known danger. Or, or if a child, or if a student is having struggles and you're not sharing information about how to provide supports for a given student, or, so all of that, it's very complex, but I, you know, I think, I think there are a lot of dedicated folks to talk about. If there are barriers, or how do we address it from a policy perspective? And that's been the real focus, so.
Mo, did you have something?
Yes, it's for you, John. You had listed there four different themes, I think it was, that your conversations revolved around, and I missed the third one. You had the common language, the whole community. What was after that one?
Superintendent Blaine, coordination of law enforcement training, inclusion and emotional disabilities needs to be, if you will, recorded, recognized.
Okay.
Specific certifications and policy recommendations.
Okay.
Those were his four.
Thank you.
Anything else? I just want to emphasize again, regards to a lot of great organizations are doing great things in regards to responding for our school safety. A lot of, but they're all independent per se, and the bottom line of this, if you will, task force is to get all organizations that are conducting response training to have one protocol to train. Thank you.
So, I think the next thing underneath my agenda is Ryan, and Ryan said he didn't have any updates, but I thought a quick public recognition of congratulations to Ryan for the new baby in their family. And as I joked about, Brian being gone as well, I find Ryan does a lot around here too, in his absence, so thanks, Ryan. Congratulations. So with that, I'll end my report, I guess.
Thank you, Commissioner. Standing committee reports. Patricia, please report on the policy committee meeting, please.
Yes, we had a discussion of our four-year review of state board bylaw, B3. This is the state board member code of conduct. We reviewed this, and through the suggestion of Scott Summers, we will make some minor revisions and bring that to the full board as an action item in May. And upcoming, we will be doing a four-year review of bylaw B19, which involves computer equipment, internet access, and electronic mail except, exceptive use. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Patricia. Rachel, please report on the legislative committee meeting, please.
The legislative committee met today, and there's several things that we're going to talk about. First, in some of our pre-planning for next year as we move forward, not only whatever time is allowed, next month, we're going to have an additional committee meeting on May 9th. So just to let you know that we're going to meet in Omaha on May 9th as a legislative committee. We also spent a little bit of time talking about the NASBE, or the NASB 2018 Legislative Conference, that three of the committee members were able to attend. And I'm going to hand out, the committee already has this, but I'm going to hand out to our non-committee members. We put together, so Maureen, Pat McPherson, myself, were the three that attended the conference, and we spent some time kind of summarizing. It was probably one of the best conferences that NASB's put on for a while, in the sense of the timing and the pertinence of the topics. And as we transitioned from the state having a greater role in education rather than being reactive to the federal legislation through ESSA, and we start to pick up some of those things, many of the topics were really pertinent to what's happening in other states, and themes and trends that we should take a look at. And so this just gives you a summary. First of all, it's homework assignment also, because we're going to talk about this again tomorrow a little bit, when we have a work session after the business meeting tomorrow. But today, we just wanted to take a few minutes to highlight a couple of the sessions that were in here. And I just felt, from my perspective, and then I'll turn it to Pat and Maureen, a couple of the sessions you'll find, we did some recommendations because there are things that we need to take a look at in more depth, and one of those pieces are the changes that might be made to various guidance and regulatory changes at the U.S. Department of Education that may be impacting things that were not necessarily on our radar screen, and so going forward, having updates from the staff on some of those changes that are happening from the U.S. Department of Education would be pretty important. Couple of the strands of sessions I went to were around improving communication strategies, and improving communication strategies with key stakeholders, and creating some ongoing engagement processes with stakeholders. One of the other sessions that I went to was around the teacher shortage area, and that session diving deeper into teacher shortage data, brought to light a research request that we'll have to take a look at, the data on teacher shortage in Nebraska. And this session talked about, you may have a perception of what this shortage is, but if you don't delve into your data, the reality of what your shortage, shortage is maybe just a little bit different than what your perceptions are, and that it's important to delve into those issues. And then to really have a good understanding of what's happening with your, with our regulatory processes with teacher preparation as it relates to the needs of teachers. And one of those suggestions was around the general education requirements at the post-secondary level for teachers, maybe something that we need to take a look at a little bit, that that might be one area we can have a positive influence in teacher preparation programs. So.
Pat, did you have some?
Well, first of all, I got to attend the legislative conference, or meeting of the legislative committee, because I represent you on that, on that committee, and I can't say that what we heard was very exciting or positive. Seems like the Senate and Congress are working at their own pace. Renewal of Perkins, of idea, of the technical education grant, of the Higher Education Act grant are moving very slowly. And frankly, if one of those got through Congress this year, it probably would be surprising. And in that, in the same instance, we, the three of us were able to make a call on our congressional delegation. We got to visit with Congressman Bacon, we got to visit with Senator Fisher, and a representative from Senator Sasse's office. So, it was probably more meet and greet than anything substantive, substantial, but at least it gave us an opportunity to visit with those folks. Beyond that, in attending some of the meetings, you know, one of the ones I was really interested in was preparing today's students for tomorrow's jobs, and it's really interesting. One of the things that was really surprising was the most important or most needed job in 2030 will be that of an elementary school teacher. That was, that was just, that's the most, that's the most needed job as they envision 2030. And jobs are just turning over so quickly that 55 million new jobs will be created by 2023, and 20% of today's jobs won't even exist in 20 years. So, question is, how, we've got a 10-year strategic plan for this board, but what's the plan for preparing students for 10 years out, or 2030? So I think that, that gives us some real challenges, and there was a, we had some commentary about the fact that today, attending school somewhere in this country is somebody that's going to live to be 150 years old. I'm not sure that, you know, I fully agree that that's likely to happen, but that's, you know, that's just one of those, those prognostications that we're hearing. And there was something else that I meant to bring out, and I'm sorry, I might ask for rebuttal later.
Or tomorrow, we'll see the work session.
Oh, the cellphone, you know, just, I had not heard the term regula, or Generation Z before now. And that's children that born since 2001, since 9/11. And their mode of learning is right here in my hand. And one of the comments that was made was the fact that, you know, if you're in a classroom, because of the attention span children have today, you've got about eight or 10 seconds to get their attention if you're in the classroom, otherwise you're going to lose them. So, some important things I think about as we look forward, you know, how we're going to teach and what the status quo is. Oh, I know the other one I was going to mention was very interesting from the standpoint of K through three education, and the fact that 40% of our principals and superintendents really, if you ask them, do not feel comfortable about their knowledge of early childhood education. That's really something that struck me. So, I've got a couple brochures I'll pass around for the board members that want to keep them, but thank you.
Maureen?
Just adding on to what Patrick was saying about the 55 million more jobs that'll be created, new ones by 2023. 40 million of those jobs will require post-secondary education. So as we really think about career education, career CTE, we really need to think about the jobs of the future. I found it interesting, Patrick and I both attended a session on early childhood, and he talked about principals and administrators not being prepared to understand pre-K through third grade, or through eighth grade, basically. And the other part being, if they don't understand it, how can they ensure that their teachers are prepared to have our, have our students ready? The other thing that came out in there that stood out to me was that there are a lot of poor practices going on around teacher assignments. And that is, folks are being moved to less, they're moving less effective teachers out of the tested grades and moving them down into the non-tested grades, instead of ensuring the best and the brightest are in the early grades. So I thought that was interesting. And the other part, and you'll be able to see this on the paperwork, teaching to the standards is an ongoing weakness in early childhood, and that these teachers and principals haven't been given the capacity to do high-quality instruction. And so we all go back to that importance of that pre-K birth-through-eight-year-old child and getting them going. There was another session that came from, oh, yeah, Insights and Lessons Learned From Former White House Education Advisors. And one of them was, if students aren't engaged, they aren't learning. And that, where was that? How to do, governors have a lot of weight on issues with Congress, so we have to remember The concentration of poverty in schools predicts student success, but the concentration of poverty in schools also affects the success of non-poverty students. And we had quite a conversation on that in our legislative committee, which I think is really important. And out of that came, the, we talked about the recommendation over here on the one side of, you know, do our TOSA funds that we have that go to equalize districts actually go to the schools determined in need? Or do they simply go to the district to use in its overall budgeting process? So, it's something that we want to look into.
Which ties to the last session I'll just mention, and then tomorrow we can discuss in more detail. And this was a session on advancing equitable school funding, and so a few of these topics really intersected, and that, you know, really was a discussion around the changes that have occurred in the reporting expectations around per pupil, school-level funding data, which that's not data in the past we have looked at, but now there's an expectation of that data to be reported, and may drive us to start to have conversations and rethink some of the processes for resource allocation, and is there element associated with accountability that we need to think about as it relates to resource allocation? So, those are just some of the topics that were covered in the session that were really food for thought for all of us.
And Rachel, I just want to commend you in front of the full board here, and to those listening, that you've really taken this legislative committee and moved it forward in directions that we need to be taking, and being more involved, and the commissioner working with us, and Brian who's not here. But thank you for all your work on this committee, chairing it.
Well, you just teed up the next and last highlight from our legislative committee in the last report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Bloomstedt, and I believe Dr. Freyson, to talk about some of the things that are happening in Nebraska with our current legislation. We also had quite a discussion on some of the current activities that are happening. So, between the two of you, if you want to update the full board on some of those current legislative activities.
Yeah, I think there's probably two, two major items left that we've, that we've had conversations about and taken positions on, and about and taken positions on and deeply involved in. The first one, I'll just bring it up, is Senator Ross's LB 1069, which continues to appear on the agenda. You know, I guess I would call it unusual, although it's the second time it's happened in two years that a bill was pulled from committee without going through the regular Education Committee process. So that actually sits there now on general file. It appears, it appeared yesterday at the end of the agenda. It appears again today at the end of the agenda. They are moving relatively slowly through bills, and there are several bills in advance. So I don't know that the timing of that particular one will actually see that that will actually advance. So that's one we're watching. I think the other one we're watching is LB 1081, which is the department's omnibus bill, is, I guess I'll start to refer to it as, certainly provisions that we asked for. But on its general file debate, Senator Lenihan and Senator Panzey-Brooks offered an amendment that put the, what they deemed the Nebraska Reading Improvement Act, an amendment that they had applied to that particular bill. What I will tell you is, in reviewing that, and we were maybe not surprised at the activity around that particular topic because we've been engaged with that, but maybe surprised that it was going to be amended to 1081. And so when, that is actually the first time, because it's come through a different process, first time that we actually had an opportunity to do a fiscal analysis formally in the process, because there hadn't been a moment in time to do that yet until it was adopted on the amendment. So we took up and prepared a fiscal note on that. It does, at least from our review, had fiscal impact. And one of the concerns was if it had fiscal impact, it would not proceed, or the bill itself would not proceed. Certainly that caught Senator Lenihan's attention, Senator Panzey-Brooks' attention. They asked for a meeting with me. As I mentioned, the committee, full disclosure, I was sick this week, and Dr. Freisen and I think Shane Ryan went over and met with the senators. And I'll kind of turn it over to Dr. Freisen relative to those conversations and recommendations that we made for potential changes that had cost implications on that particular amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. And as a result of having to step in on behalf of the Commissioner, no one missed Brian more than I did. So let me see if I can do this justice. In particular, Senators Panzey-Brook and Senator Lenihan asked for our input on the amendment to LB 1081. And we illuminated particularly five different points that I want to bring to your attention. One was to clarify the language on the relationship of statewide ELA assessments. In particular, they had included information about content standards, and they had said content reading standards. And there aren't content reading standards, there are content standards for ELA. There are strands in ELA, five in particular, and those strands are reading, writing, multiple literacy, speaking, and listening. But we wanted to clarify that language there so that it would be exact, especially as our administrators and others through the state know that. We wanted to remove language also, or suggested to remove language related to statewide reporting. Since there was concern about the fiscal note, having statewide reporting certainly was going to cost money to collect that data from all of our districts statewide. And so we wanted to be clear where that was within their amendment and remove that such. The third point to clarify is, we wanted to include language on the addition of an NDE reading specialist and NDE support to local school districts on reading intervention programs. Certainly, we would expect NDE to be right up there with the ESUs in providing support to our districts, especially in reading. We don't have a reading specialist here at the Nebraska Department of Education. And so we wanted to be real clear where we were suggesting within the amendment where that would be in terms of adding support to our, or providing support to our districts. The fourth was to clarify language, that relevant school personnel will develop individual reading improvement plans, and that the plan is to be communicated to the parents or guardians. It was not particularly clear within the amendment how the plans would become plans, who would write them, whether the plans would be written by the ESUs, whether the plans would be written by a principal or the parent. And so we just attempted to clarify that language. And lastly, to clarify language to indicate that individual student reading intervention should be selected based on the result of a diagnostic assessment. In the amendment as it was, it was rather prescriptive as to what the strategies and the interventions would be. Those prescriptions were not necessarily interventions or strategies. When a diagnostic assessment is given to the students, it would show through that diagnostic assessment exactly what the needs were for the student to be able to improve in reading skills. And so we didn't want to have within the amendment any limitations on what those could be and how those could be delivered. Those were our suggestions. And we also wanted to point out the number of assessments that a third grader could take. Even in our best, with our best intentions, third graders take the state assumative, third graders take a national assessment, and in most cases, except for one in our district, it's MAPS. That's up to three times a year, no less than two times a year. And now this assessment and reading would be three times a year. So at the very least, for a third grader, it would be five times or six times a year or more. And so we wanted to point those five, six things out to them. I can't say that they necessarily followed all of those recommendations, but those were our recommendations that we gave as such.
I would just add, and we checked right after the Legislative Committee meeting, and there was an amendment that just got filed today, probably this morning. And in that amendment might include some of these things, but I don't believe it includes all of the recommendations that we had. So we'll try to get through that. I suspect it includes the changes that would have dealt with costs, but again, I haven't been able to double-check against all of those different things just at that point in time. I do think it's, I want to just highlight the kind of the dynamic that we often have in trying to work with legislation from a staffing side. One is to provide really objective technical assistance to senators as they're asking for that, and at the same time, represent your viewpoint relative to the positions that you had on this. What I would tell you, and I think based on at least the conversations around the Legislative Committee, that in these cases, I think everything that Dr. Freisen mentioned was very much in line with what the wishes of the board had been. And I think generally also in conversations that we've had with Senator Lenihan, Senator Panzey-Brooks, is their interpretation of this, is they're turning it over to us to write, you know, make rules and administer this particular law. Always our concern is when they get so specific about things such as strategies and interventions, and those are becoming explicit in law, it doesn't give us the room for the interpretation that we'd want. So that's always the balancing act that we're playing. And so, again, I haven't gone all the way through this other amendment, but I still see that there might be those types of concerns in it, so.
Yeah, okay. I guess my thing is already on. You might not be able to answer my first question, but the approximate cost. And then, secondly, it really bothers me as a former teacher that the legislators are being so prescriptive as to what is going to happen in the classroom when teachers are trained in how to help individual students. So I appreciate the work that you did trying to guide them away from that. I think that's something, you know, it's really bothersome. So I just felt I needed to say that. And as far as the cost, you might not be able to share that at this time.
And I will tell you, so on the other amendment, right, not related to the one that's just been filed, but the other amendment, and I'm not going to get the exact cost, I was trying to pull it up quick. But the, we filed a fiscal note that you can find on the Legislative's web, Legislative's website. And the, and I'm wanting to say, we submitted something roughly around $100,000 that we anticipated per year, maybe it was 110, I forget the exact amount. But that was our cost. When we do, just maybe another aspect of this, when we do fiscal notes, our fiscal notes do not necessarily consider the costs that are incurred at the local district level. So we're being asked to do fiscal notes that reflect our actual costs. We did include, and I think probably Bryce and Corey and others that worked on it, tried to at least indicate that there would be costs to school districts. Those costs are undetermined, you know, relative to that. Those costs can have an impact on the state, by the way, through aid formula if we're having to do things that have that particular cost. And so, again, it's, we try to do our due diligence and make sure that we're providing the accurate information on those fronts. But that fiscal note process maybe could be improved at some point relative to the costs that actually is incurred by other political subdivisions. And I think that's probably Senator Grony's concern relative to any costs that would be applied and have to be absorbed at a local district level. So that's how we take that on, and so how we try to address that issue.
Thank you.
I do think that's an important part of the conversation at the Legislative Committee level also, is to determine how do we start to look at the fiscal impact in a different way? Because I do believe when we talk about an unfunded mandate, we need to be able to describe that in different ways. It's nebulous. And it's important for us, I think, in our leadership roles, to be able to really define what's meant by, in essence, an unfunded mandate. And mandating interventions are the right thing to do, but it, not mandating, but interventions are the right thing to do. Mandating interventions without understanding that fiscal impact, I think, is a continuing problem that we have, that we need to understand in a better perspective. Is this still for committee?
Go ahead, Molly.
Matt, I have a question. If in fact, we have to hire reading specialists at NDE, was that included in 110,000?
No. So actually, that's relative to a conversation that happened on this other amendment. And I, again, I don't know that it's in here. I think the, I think the conversation, maybe Dr. Freisen can answer this better. I think the conversation ended up leading to, hey, look, they're assuming that we have reading specialists just ready to provide services, and that's not something that we've had traditionally at the department, so.
If they refuse to attach a fiscal note, then how can we absorb the cost of that specialist?
Yeah. In that case, we tried to make clear that if they added something like that, it would have to be a funded position, right?
And that's why we tried to be so clear about exactly where that would be in the amendment, what support we would be offering if we have that reading specialist, and what we couldn't offer if we didn't have the reading specialist.
Read the new amendment, we'll see.
I don't.
I think it's, I think that's there.
So we'll look at that. The other component of this, also if we want to have a dialogue with the legislature, we have a couple, and I know the Legislative Committee has talked about trying to be proactive in thinking about the types of work that we're doing. But our budget process also has to align with that. So when we make a request, and when we're trying to make, I think it would be a logical type of request, that, hey, look, the legislature is asking us to be more specifically providing supports for school districts for reading intervention. And I think it'd be logical that we would include something like that in our budget. Now, we don't get to decide whether or not they approve that within our, within a budget request, but if we think those are the types of things, and we have agreement from legislators that believe those are the types of things, the investments the state should make, we have those opportunities, I guess, at least to advocate in that sense.
They already cast the budget, okay?
Yeah, and I mean for next year, for the next my annual budget and the planning process that'll be underway for that, so.
I just want to pick up on the unfunded mandate. That applies to the Department of Education as well. I mean, we think about it in context of schools as we were talking about the intervention, but for a long period of time, that has certainly had a negative impact on the Department of Education. I don't think we can say enough how much of the department's funding comes through federal funds that are prescriptive in their own right, that doesn't allow many resources to add, whether it be compliance components around mandates, or whether it be support systems. And so we do need to advocate for some of those needs as well for the department.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say to the Legislative Committee and Dr. Freisen and Dr. Blumstead, one thing that I hear from my constituency over and over and over again is they want fewer tests, fewer tests. And so when you bring up that a third grader is going to be taking six, seven tests a year, just yesterday, I heard from a parent saying something about testing and what is the value of it, and can we not find a test, you know, that doesn't have to be given over and over and over again? And that's got to have some kind of expense to, either to us or to the local schools. So thank you very much for bringing that up as a consideration and voicing it. And I wanted to voice it so that my people also know that that's how I feel as well.
Yeah, I just kind of want to hook on to what Patsy was talking about. I've had individuals contact me about, you know, if a second grader is tested using this model, and they test at sixth grade reading level, why would they need to be tested again? Is that a good use of teacher time? Is it a good use of monetary resources, et cetera? That child should be working on more challenging-type things. So there's a lot to.
And I just want to add, I mean, not to be the advocate for assessment all of a sudden, but maybe I will be just for a moment. Good instruction includes assessment and knowing where students are. I think it's the proper type of assessment that's really critical for students and critical for teachers. And when they get raised up to the level of mandated assessments at a state level, it suddenly takes on a whole new meaning and it gets used in different ways. And so I think we always want to be very thoughtful about how we're leading the way and that kind of, that assessment vision on how this comes together. We hope our system over time is really the best in the country relative to that it's connected for the right reasons, it's used for the right purposes, all those different things. But, you know, sometimes I, you know, I hear also the portions of folks saying, well, any type of, well, the right assessment for the right student at the right moment in time is appropriate, and I don't want to lose that in the conversation either.
Anything else?
That ends our committee report. And then some.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Dr. Wise. Thank you, ma'am. I will report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting. I want to thank each and every one of you for getting in your Part I and Part II's to me for the Commissioner's appraisal. Also, I want to thank you very much for your comments. I compile all the reports, all the comments, if you will, comments, and it looks like a very, very healthy, easy-to-read report, which we'll bring to you next month in executive session. Right now, we're going to be having a Way Ahead Meeting with our appraisal committee right after this meeting. It'll be very, very short. But bottom line in regards to, the board will review the compiled evaluation of Parts 1 through 3 next month in executive session, and the board will discuss and review the contract and any other proposed contract changes at that time. So any questions? Thank you. Maureen, please report on the Aquest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
Okay. And this committee, again, consists of Pat and Rachel and Patrick McPherson and myself. We had a discussion item, and Valerie Foye and Jeremy are going to come up and talk to us. It's about information on Nebraska's statewide assessment contracts and where we are with it right now.
I'm Valerie Foye. I'm Director of Statewide Assessment.
Jeremy Henniger, Assistant Director.
Okay. That was a perfect segue into a discussion of statewide assessment, so thank you very much. So we are here to do, in essence, a two-part report. The first part, we wanted to tell you how statewide testing is going right now, because it is ongoing in our state, out in our schools currently. And second of all, we wanted to present the Commissioner's recommendation for the statewide assessment contracts for the 2018-19 school year, for next school year. So first, our update on how assessment is going. And so, first of all, I'll talk about the ACT. The company, of course, that gives us the ACT is the ACT Company. And the main mode of testing for the ACT is paper pencil. Schools can give it online, and some do, but the majority do not elect to go that way. And so we know that approximately 90% of the students will take the test paper pencil. Our test, our main test day in the state of Nebraska was April 3, and it snowed. And so I have some updates for you on how And so, I have some updates for you on how that testing went. The approximate number of tests to be administered were 22,000. And the TBD is in here because we posted this last week. But what we do know is that the, for the most part, the testing did go forward, and that we can make a pretty good assumption that about 90% of those assessments for the ACT for 11th grade have been completed. Now, this is the second year that we have given the ACT statewide. And the contract we're going to be showing you will be for our third year that we'll be giving it. Our NSCAST summative, so this is our Nebraska Student Centered Assessment System, is for grades three through eight, and our company on that is NWA, Northwest Evaluation Association. And this is actually the first year of this testing, and the contract we're going to share with you will be for the second year. The main mode of testing is online. It's online adaptive testing. And there's a fairly wide window for this. It has over a seven-week period, a six-week window with a one-week makeup. But what we do know is the concentration of testing will take place right here in the middle, right over the next couple of weeks. There are over 300,000 tests to be administered. And as of yesterday at the close of business, about 14, excuse me, 14% of those had been administered. And by mid-morning this morning, that had risen to 21%. So, you can see that the schools are rolling right through these and giving these assessments. And I'll give update on how that went. Our NSCAST summative alternate, this is for grades three through eight and 11. That is given by, our company is Data Recognition Corporation. This will be the first year that I'm reporting on, and the contract would be the second year. They're paper pencil. These are for the students that are the most severely cognitively disabled, 1%, they're called. And they are paper pencil tests. This group also has the seven-week window, and the, most of the tests will take place over the next two weeks. And we have about 1,320 students who are being assessed with that. So, our test report for the ACT, our materials had been delivered into schools, since the majority of them were paper pencil. And by February 16th, any school that wanted to test online had technology requirements that they had to meet to assure that they would be able to give that test online. That technology approval had to be completed by February 16th. We've had lots of phone calls, but there are not any big problems, just details, et cetera. And at the time that I posted this PowerPoint, there were no problems reported, but I do have a few pieces of information I wanted to add to that. And they are that on April 2nd, we realized that there was going to be snow, and some significant snow in some areas of our state. And so, we worked with ACT to put together an email that said, if it snows tomorrow, and if you do cancel school, this is the process that you need to follow. For sure, you can do something to make up the ACT test, and you just have to take your student safety as the first concern of your district. And so, we sent that email out, and it, and in fact, seven schools did cancel school that day. And the schools that canceled involved a little over 100 students, so we know 100 students were affected. Those 100 students that would have taken the paper pencil that day now can take it on the makeup date that has been scheduled all along, which is April 24th. But now, we have also opened an emergency date on May 8th, so that students who didn't take it April 2nd, 3rd, because they were snowed out, so they're taking it April 24th, but they get sick that day, can take it May 8th. So, we think we have all the contingencies covered here, okay? There have been, there has been some successful online assessments given for the ACT, and there have also been some interrupted ones. So, on the actual, on April 4th, there were three schools that were not able to test their students online, and they had had ACT technology approval. So, we're working with ACT, what's the answer to this? How can a school have approval and not be able to test? Their students were not, they weren't impacted in that, they were in the test, and then they were impacted in some way, they simply couldn't get in. And so, they are planning to test those students. There were about 50 students in the state that that occurred with. And then, we've had some online testing with some little interruptions that have gone on. We know that in McCook, a few students were getting an error screen during their testing. All of them were able to complete, when they received an error screen, they were able to log back in. And the ACT, the timing in it just excelled, gives them more time back in for any time they lost out in to acclimate back into the test. So, it wasn't a perfect story, but we do know that, for the most part, our ACT tests are being completed and have been completed throughout the state. Now, we continue to work with ACT on what happened on technology and what we can do so that it will always be a successful experience for our schools. I'm happy to say we were in direct contact with Network Nebraska, and there was not a log jam because of Network Nebraska or anything like that. We weren't testing so much that it caused an issue, so that's not the issue in the state with the ACT test. And in fact, we know NSCAST tests were taking place at the very same time with absolutely no interruption. So, we continue to investigate that. On the customer service, we, on ACT, we had very long wait times last year, a lot of customer dissatisfaction, 20 to 30 minutes during testing. And there are no reports of wait time at all on customer service, and I did ask Iris Owens to join us, she's right here. So, Iris is paid for by ACT. We wrote it into the RFP that we wanted a representative that would be specifically working with ACT. And so, Iris's position is paid for by ACT, but she's definitely one of us. And she just is doing such a fabulous job in serving these districts. And Jeremy, you made a really good point this morning. When they just call general customer service, they're sort of in all 50 states. They don't necessarily know the specific answers about Nebraska. For example, it's unusual that a state is allowed to do online makeup tests. That's not typical, I just want you to know that. And we fought for that, and we got that. We thought that was the right thing because it gave a bigger window, and we wanted to test all of our students and give maximum opportunity. And Iris just knows every little in and out about the state of Nebraska, and she really, our schools, I have multiple emails singing her praises. So, we are very, very happy with that, and our schools are too. So, that's really helped the process. And what's more, when there were online issues, Iris could answer one phone and I could answer the other, and that was really nice. So, on our NSCAST summative general, I do want you to know, on the very first day of testing, March 19th, there were a few online issues, and what happened is kids simply couldn't get in. The tickets that had been printed before that test morning, the students couldn't get in. This involved about three schools. We estimate 90 students were affected. And so, there wasn't a wide-scale effect because it was the first morning of testing, of a seven-week window. So, there was very little testing going on. So, NWA quickly figured out what was going on. That was resolved by 12:20. On that same day, NWA, not school-reported, they found that there was a conflict with MAC 1010 operating system. They had that resolved by the next morning, and we have had no interruptions since then. So, we have not had issues, we've not had computer issues. I know, I know, right? Should I be?
Everybody, please, come on, everybody now. Thank you.
Our window ends the first week in May, and Joe Deka said, when will you feel confident? And I said, the first week in May. So, I do, the link that's posted here is a status page, and it tells, and it's just a public status page. Anyone can go there and know if testing is a green light, a yellow light, or a red light, so you always know if we're okay for testing. And that has been green since that was resolved on March 19th. There are no wait times on the NWA customer service. I do want to tell you, NWA put a team of tech Level 2 people in the state for the first week and second week of testing. They were actually out in schools. There were, they put, one of the technicians was in a school that had never used MAC Growth, so they were unfamiliar with the engine, and they had someone there, they had someone at a lot of large schools. And this was really great. And they offered to put them in some schools where the schools were like, oh, no thanks, we think we're good. And they were fine, you know? But it was really great because the NWA tech people got to observe third graders trying to put in their user code, you know, and things like that, that are just really, you know, helpful to them to go back and actually make changes. So, we have these tech people here and these little third graders here, and the twain did meet. And so, I think that's very helpful, and I think that's a great service. They had several ready to just go to any district that was having problems, so they could figure that internally. So, I think that really speaks for the service. When I say here, the assessment, Special Ed, English learner, you know, we're all answering questions. They're not because anything's wrong, they're just because there are a lot of details in our manuals. And I don't want some principal to have to look and find something on page 36. So, we're more than happy to answer their questions. The summative, we had no issues, no wait time on the customer service or, and again, just some questions. So, I'd like to now discuss the Commissioner's recommendations for the contracts for 2018-19, and I'm going to talk some here, and Jeremy's going to present some. So, just to let you know where we are, again, to revisit this, ACT is delivered by ACT, and the 2018-19 would be the last year of a three-year request for proposal. So, we will be releasing another request for proposal. The NSCAST summative general, which is provided by NWA, we will be in our second year of a five-year request for proposal. And the alternate, NSCAST alternate, DRC, will be in the second year of a five-year request for proposal. So, you, in the documents that were posted, the document A is the ACT contract, and it gives further details. But on the, for ACT, on this slide, if you look at the gray side, those are the costs last year on the left-hand side of the slide, and the right-hand side of the slide are the costs that we are proposing for this year in the contract. So, last year, our students take the ACT plus writing, and last year, we paid $48 a student, and this year, it's 49. And I think we have the lowest cost per student in the US. I have called multiple states, because I know all the ones that are giving the ACT, and for the ACT plus writing, I think we got the lowest cost in the US. And, but we do have approximately 1,000 more students, so instead of 22,000, we have around 23,000. So, that'll raise costs because our student population is increasing, which is a good thing. Our ACT online prep I have is the second line there, it's $15 a student, and we do want to continue to offer that for schools that would want that. Jeremy, would you do a, there's a little, yeah. But I've also included here the pre-ACT for 1250 a student. And I didn't add in to the cost, when I get down to the bottom line on the cost, I did not add both the ACT online prep and the pre-ACT. But we did have a discussion about the pre-ACT possibly being used to be able to measure growth in our committee meeting. So, these are different programs, and I just want to accent that a little bit. The ACT online prep is literally a preparation program. Like, students can go in, and they can do practice tests, and they can see practice items and things like that. And it actually, the ACT online prep does include a writing test, two of them, in fact, that are AI scored and give feedback on that. So, it's a prep. The pre-ACT is not a prep. It is a pre-ACT test. You could think of it as replacing the plan. A lot of schools used to take plan, and I have to actually tell you, a lot of schools take the pre-ACT already and just pay for it themselves. But the pre-ACT is an attractive offer because it has outstanding reporting that can really help schools in developing curriculum and providing in-time curriculum support, learning supports for their students. So, the dual reporting, you see that cost went down quite a bit from last year. Last year was the first year of the test. You know, you have to, you have man-hours in developing what the reports are going to look like, the use of your real estate, what's going to be included. But we've already determined that, they did them last year. So, these are really just printing costs that you're seeing here and bringing in the new data and assuring that it's accurate. So, if you look at the total, I have at the bottom the total cost of these contracts. The total request for the 18-19 year would be up about $56,000, $57,000, okay? Then.
When I'm looking at the analytics for the pre-ACT and the ACT online prep, it looks like we are contracting for every student in Nebraska to be able to do that.
Uh huh.
Do you think most districts are taking advantage of, will take advantage of the online prep and the pre-ACT?
We only pay for the ones that actually access it, and about 10,000 out of the 20,000 have accessed it right now.
That's important.
Yep, yep.
So, for the alternate, this would be document B. Once again, the 2017-18 contract numbers are in gray there, for 18 and 19, the contract in the lighter color. And we know that those were anticipated to be lower this year because the first-year costs are higher as we get started again. The one scope change that we're making a recommendation for is online tools training, which are essentially practice tests. We heard from the field that we didn't have enough practice test opportunities for these students, and so, we needed to bolster that. So, we're getting about twice as many practice tests with about twice as many items in there for students to be able to make sure that they're prepared to take the test. And so, we're asking for that additional piece in the scope change. And you can see the total difference between last year and this coming year, what would we propose, would be down about $386,000 as we move forward for this year.
So, the last one, and this is document C, is the NSCAST general, which is grades three through eight. Again, the gray is last year, and the blue is this year. So, our basic costs that are included are slightly down this year. You can see there were 51, 5 million won last year, and they're down to 44 million, 4.5 million this year. I so rarely have to say millions, like, never when I look at my bank accounts, you know? So, I stumble on it. But those are the basic costs for the summative test and the interim testing, so we provide the summative and the MAC growth for those costs. Last year, these next two items, we did, they were optional, but we did include them, and they're professional development and formative assessment, and we are definitely recommending that those be continued. The professional development and the formative assessment, if we have this, these assessments without those pieces, that we really, you know, we feel we're not reaching our vision of what we want assessment to be, that it not just be a focus on summative assessment to occur in the spring of the year, but that we provide support around that assessment, professional learning around it, and that there are formative assessment supports for the school districts and for the teachers. So, if we did get the basic costs and the options, the same as we did last year, our costs would actually be down about $590,000. We, however, did ask NWA to price some scope changes for us, and those would, and I'm going to have Jeremy talk about those.
So, the first one is text-dependent analysis and science. So, we used to, last year, we did text-dependent analysis in grades five through eight in the ELA test when we were with DRC. That was not part of the contract going, moving forward this year, and so, we don't have that text-dependent analysis. If you remember, that is an open-ended constructive response writing test, basically. That's part of the ELA test. We've been working, assessment and teaching and learning have been working a lot together about vision for science tests moving forward with the new science standards that you all approved in September, and trying to figure out how we would assess those at the state level in 2021 when we get there. One of the recommendations that we're making is that we add a text-dependent analysis, a writing piece, and a constructive response to the test at grades five and eight. In order to make sure that we're ready to do that in time, we're asking that a scope change be added to this so that we could start field testing and doing the work that we would need to do. The text-dependent analysis is a great piece because it really ties all of the standards together. If you look at ELA and math and science, all of them talk about evidence and using evidence to support writing. And so, that's one thing that we would like going forward is to be able to do that piece. And it's a nice place for us to bring back writing at grades five and eight, and then we would have great writing at five, eight, and then 11th grade on the ACT. So, it continues to allow us to have a state summative piece for writing as we move forward, which we think is important because that writing instruction is so important. It also facilitates the idea that writing across the curriculum is important, not just in ELA, but it's important in science, social studies, music, so on and so forth. So, we're asking for that. The other piece is a data resolution system. After we do the testing, after you have 300,000 tests, you can imagine there's a lot of data that has to be resolved. So, students move during that window, there can be. Um, there, there can be, um, uh, misbubbling of students' names and all of those types of things. And so there's a, a need to resolve, um, uh, lots of data pieces. Previously with DRC, they had a system that, that allowed us to look at those pieces very easily. Um, NWA doesn't have quite the same system. They do have a solution for this year. What we're asking is that, that we leave that in there as an optional cost for this year, that we would exercise if we would need it. Once, once we find out if the, the solution that NWA has for us this year works well enough. We think that the number of, uh, uh, files that need to be resolved is, is going to be much lower because we have, um, uh, fewer, many fewer, um, paper pencil tests. And that's where a lot of the, the cause for resolutions came, for people bubbling in. Um, and so we know that, uh, we have a lot fewer paper pencil tests this year. So we're hoping, hoping that, that number will be manageable. So, uh, right now we're asking for that to be in there just in case we need to exercise that option moving forward. And as you can see, as, as for the total, if we, we put those scope changes in, um, from last year to this year, we would still be down about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Tatsi. Um, I just wanted to also thank you for the practice test, more variety on those. I actually had a group of students come to me and express a concern over that. They said, well, there's one practice test and we'd sure like to see a lot more of them so that we could take different tests. And so that's great. I'm so glad to hear that. I can go back to them and say, yes, okay?
I just wanted to, uh, I said this during the committee meeting, but I think it's important that the public, um, know this. You two have done great things to, that NWA didn't do anywhere else in the United States. And as you're developing this, it will be used as a model for the entire United States. And that makes me very proud and, and so thankful for what you've done to have us be a model state. Woo-hoo for that.
Go ahead, Molly.
Um, just a quick question. I know the feds are interested in English language arts and math. And we of course have science testing as well. And I'm just a little bit needing a clarification. If in fact, um, when you, when Dr. Friesen was talking about now having tests in reading, will that be on a statewide scale or will that just be local reading tests that are available for local consumption?
Well, that would depend on the, there's no federal requirement to give a reading test specifically about reading to measure K-two learning.
Because that actually would ramp up your expenses substantially, especially if it was psychometrically approved in uniform. And I hope that's part of the conversation with the inner camera as well.
Yeah, I, I think what I just add, I mean, depending on how that goes, I mean, we're going to have to have some conversations. And I, my, my hope, and again, if, if something does pass, that, that they're kind of sending it back into our court to make decisions about how those things would be carried out. And I think that was a bit of the, the concern. But if we end up, you know, I, I, I think there's, if we end up in a position where underneath this contract with NWA and MAP is being, uh, used in three through eight and we're actually paying for that, if, if for some reason they wanted to extend that to, because make, um, am I correct, K, there is a, a K-two, um, version of MAP.
They have like K-two primary grades.
Yeah. And so, and that was one of the specific assessments that Sandra Lenahan had mentioned on the floor and, and discussion about. So I, I don't know what all that might look like, but there are, there are costs with that. If we start to say, it must be this assessment assist this way, data must be gathered and collected by the state of Nebraska. And that was pretty much the point of trying to remove that portion of that.
And that becomes high-stake testing if it becomes part of our assessment paradigm.
What I, what I found is if you collect data at the state level, someone will want to use that data. Um, and, and, you know, they, only halfway joking on, on that front. I mean, I think we have to always go into this, uh, with a lot of thought about, is that really the right direction? And what's the purpose of those assessments? And how do we, how do we ensure that it's being done properly?
Any other, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, and I just want to thank Valerie, um, Jeremy for the information as it relates to the pre-ACT, uh, as well. And as I got to thinking about your presentation again now, that, whether that's a discussion for teaching and learning or for the strategic planning. But I think there's some real value in looking at the pre-ACT and thinking about the concept of growth and what, what that may mean and, and what level of interest there may be in schools for, for doing that, that process and looking at that opportunity. So whether it comes back to teaching and learning discussion or whether it goes to strategic, um, the strategic planning committee, I think there's some value in, um, talking about that opportunity that, that may be available.
Thank you very much.
Could I add one point?
Sure.
Cause I, you know, I don't know if it came up in the committee meeting. You know, one of the questions I asked when, when Valerie and Jeremy presented this to me was about who's using that and where. And I think as we start to look at which students are using ACT test prep, which ones are, are using or, or which districts are making a choice around pre-ACT, that we also want to be thoughtful about what's, the, what's, what's happening from an equity perspective. If you remember the original conversation around that ACT test prep was trying to ensure that our, our students that, uh, maybe came from an economic disadvantage, were taking advan, advantage of those particular assessments. And I don't know that our data would show that that to be accurate. In fact, maybe the opposite right now. And that, that causes me some concerns about how that gets implemented and used and from an equitable fashion. So those are things that we will be digging into as well, to think about how those are promoted, how we use those, those opportunities to, to advantage all of our students across the state.
And then you might want to dig into also the students who are using them, what is the result of that?
Yeah, growth.
Lisa.
Growth has been mentioned a couple of times. And to me, that is a better indicator of success. And I hope we continue talking about it. Because if you have a benchmark here and a student is down here, but they get here and miss that benchmark, look how much improvement that is. And, and that is so important that we keep that conversation going.
Rachel.
Which just triggered another thought from previous. You're triggering lots, lots of thoughts. And I don't know, uh, what the plan is as it relates to college ready. Uh, now that ACT owns what used to be, and we used to talk about EdReady with, uh, Enroc. And now it's, it is a tool in the toolbox of the ACT, uh, the college ready. I don't know what that looks like in making that available to schools and, and thinking about that in context as well because that's another tool that may have some real value for some of our schools. So I don't know if you look at that at all.
Yeah, we, we've definitely had conversations on that front. In fact, um, somewhat different from the, the contract specific for ACT, but also the other layer of how we begin to look at those resources. And even between NW and A, uh, NWA and ACT conversations around how we ensure that we're providing additional access to materials from whether it's Enroc or in that case that ACT and Enroc have that agreement, or whether it's other types of, um, open education resources that would be available. I, I, that's going to be a critical part of that conversation, but not necessarily specific to, um, just to the ACT portion. But obviously that's, that's one opportunity, so.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make one comment if I may. I had the opportunity to participate in town hall meetings in West Omaha, South Omaha. Participated in a program at Nathan Hale Middle School in Omaha. And each time the education questions concerned ACT, MAP, NCAS. They were just elated with where this was going. In regards to ACT, they wanted to know how long it was going to be provided to the, the students in the future at no expense. Also, they were also enthusiastic about the prep that went along with it and also the costs that were taken care of by the state. But most of them were, they knew about MAP and they knew about its integration with NCAS. And they could not be happier, had, uh, great things to say about it. So thank you very much.
That ends our report.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll take a, uh, six-minute break till, uh, thirty minutes after the hour.
Seven minutes.
Thank you very much. First up, Molly, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee Meeting, please.
All right, let's start with 3.5A. This involves having a contract with Easter Seals in Nebraska for students with disabilities aged 14 to 21 enrolled in high school during the 18-19 school year. And Bridget, Griffin, and Lindy Foley are here. And I did want to let you know that they will be staying at this table because they're going to be talking about a number of action items. They have five action items, so ladies, just stay here. And as a point, just a brief moment of time, I did want to say, Mark, you're over there. We are so appreciative of everything you've done for VR. But what I really have enjoyed these last eight years on the board is to see how your whole VR department is a cohesive team. And Lindy and Bridget are going to carry the torch if and when you leave, which seems might be sooner than later. So Lindy, welcome in your new role to be, and thank you so much again. Let's give a round of applause to Mark. Yes. First of all, we're going to have a little presentation, and then board members ask questions. And is that all right? Okay.
Well, thank you very much, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lindy Foley with the Director for Nebraska VR. And this afternoon, Bridget and I wanted to take some time to share with you proposals that we received, specific to providing opportunities for career exploration and personal development opportunities for transitioned students with disabilities. We went through the request for proposal process, and this isn't the first time that we've offered this opportunity. But a lot of interest. We are actually looking at awarding 25 different short-term projects. And of course, we're bringing those to you today that need your approval. But again, really excited about this partnership, continued partnership. Carrying out this work helps us to comply with mandates outlined in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, or WIIOA, to provide pre-employment transition services to students with disabilities. So one of the many initiatives in the area of pre-employment transition services is through this request for proposals. So Bridget Griffin is here with me today, and we wanted to share an overview of those projects and be available to answer any questions you might have. So Bridget.
So I think the project that's up right now is Easter Seals. And we had two proposals from Easter Seals this year. Easter Seals has worked with us on summer transition programs for three years. They've always done a summer camp that has included activities like self-advocacy, workplace learning, and preparedness for students, even exposure to post-secondary programs. They've kind of incorporated a lot of the pre-employment transition services in there. So they're going to continue and do that camp again this year. I think it's been very successful. But this year, they're adding a second opportunity, and that's a leadership opportunity for students, to learn through the camp counseling environment, to take on the role of a camp counselor, and to learn through a work-based learning, basically, to be a good employee on the job. So we think they're both, they both have a lot of merit. We know that the camp is proven, and we're very excited about the leadership opportunity for Easter Seals as well. So we would seek approval for both of the Easter Seals.
Are there any questions? The committee does recommend support. Let's move now to the next action item, and this is 3.5A.2. And this has to deal with Educational Service Unit 16 to implement two four-week summer internship programs, Summer Work Education and Employment Program. Love that word, sweep. Bridget, Lindy.
Yep. So this is the third year that we've worked with ESU 16 as well. The first year, they had one program. Last year, they added a second program. Their first program was based in North Platte. Last year, they added Bogalala as a second location because they cover a huge square mileage area out there. And that was very successful, so they have proposed both programs again this year. They're kind of mirror programs. They are programs that are based on workplace readiness. So they do a portion in the classroom in the morning and do a lot of independent living skills, self-advocacy, and workplace readiness. And then they also have a work-based learning component. So their students are out working with employers in the community in the afternoon, and they're getting paid for that employment in the afternoon. So they have various places that they work. I know that Walgreens is one of them, and just various businesses within the community. There's a car detailing one and all sorts of things. So it's a great program. I'm very pleased with the results of that program.
Are there any questions from board members? The committee does recommend approval. Let's go to the next item, which is 3.5A.3. And this has to deal with a contract with Disability Rights Nebraska to conduct a self-advocacy for youth and disability program.
And again, we've worked with Disability Rights Nebraska. It's nice to be the third year in because now you know how these programs are running and working. And I would say that they're continuously improving as well. We always see in the new proposal a recommendation maybe for improvement for the next year. Disability Rights has three programs this year. They've traditionally, the first year, they had a program in Lincoln. Last year, they had a program in Lincoln and Scottsbluff. And this year, they have Lincoln, Scottsbluff, and they've added a third program in the Nebraska City Beatrice area. They're all very similar programs, working on self-advocacy with youth, and also they involve parents in that to kind of bolster that learning. So again, we've been pleased with the results of the program.
On a personal note, as the Chairman of the Committee, I wanted to really compliment VR working with DRN because a lot of times, these students are transitioning into past being with their parents. These summer camp experiences and the support for the parents reassures them that there will be other agencies as they pass the baton from VR to other groups. So I just want you to know that our students aren't going to be just left behind when they hit 21. All right. I did want to say, is there any question from anyone? Our committee does recommend approval. Let's move to 3.5A.4, and this has to do with a contract with PTI. And it kind of goes along with this. And it is called FEET, Family Employment Awareness Training. Bridget and Lindy.
So this program, actually, if you remember earlier this year, we came to you for support. We did two RFPs this year. One was a school year RFP, and one was the summer RFP. So the previous programs that I've been talking about are all related to our summer RFP. But this particular one is related to the school year RFP. We already awarded one to ESU 13 earlier this year, and that started January 1st. And it's going really well, actually, it's almost to fruition. And I was out to visit them a couple of weeks ago, and it's really looking good. But this is a second proposal that we had accepted, but we had worked with them to kind of hone it and refine it so that it's in a place where we really thought it was workable. And it is kind of a wraparound program involving families, but also resources in the community, particularly for students with significant disabilities, learning how they can go to work, taking that fear aspect out of work, and all the supports and resources to get them there. So we would recommend that this one, this is going to be a long-term project. We're starting off with one year, but we hope it to be a long-term project and working in various areas of the state.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead, Pat.
Just a statement. I have a longtime interest in what you work in. And I want to thank you for revolutionizing the opportunities for students with disabilities. No students are more deserving in the whole world and have received less over the years if you go back in history. And I go quite ways back in history. And so you cannot believe what it does for a young person with developmental disabilities to be able to have a job. And I've watched what it does. And so keep on working hard. You're doing great work.
And one thing I did want to let you know, we did recommend approval. One thing I really liked about FEET especially is it's to maintain employment. I think sometimes we think about people doing a series of successive jobs. And with FEET, it's really working with that individual's interests and aspirations and capabilities and self-confidence. And I do have a request. In your tenure, please bring more of the videos like we have seen before because I think sometimes when you put a face to the program, it means more to us. If there are no more questions, we'll move to the last item on our VR list, and it's 3.5A.5. And this deals with a contract with Educational Service 13 to provide workplace readiness training and partner with Scottsbluff, Nebraska. And by the way, Scottsbluff, kudos to them. They are really being involved in generating support for their students. Take it away, Bridget and Lindy.
So the reason that we have this second contract, or this one from ESU 13 is because of the second contract this year that we're doing with them. So we started the other contract January 1st, and this is the second contract, but it's a repeated summer transition program. I would say that they are a model program for summer transition. They have very liked the ESU 16 proposal where they do some classroom portion, but really prepare students for work. And most of the time, those students are in work-based learning opportunities with support to help them really learn those workplace readiness skills on the job. So it's been a model program for us. And they've diversified and gone to different businesses. They have the Hampton Inn, but they also have the airport, and they have a car rental place. And they have all sorts of businesses that they've now involved, so it's pretty cool.
Are there any questions?
I have a comment before you leave us. You know, when I first came on this board, I kind of had the sense that VR was just those other people over there. And, you know, thanks to you, and I think thanks to the board and Matt, you know, the inclusion of you in the strategic plan and recognizing that you're a very important part of our strategic plan, I think has totally changed the perception of a lot of people, and it certainly is where we need to go. So I'm really appreciative of that.
I would thank you for your comments. I would also note that if you looked at Goal 3.1, Pre-Employment Transition Services is reflected in that goal, and this certainly supports that work.
And by the way, as you probably see, 15% of the budget is set aside for pre-employment transition services. I think actually VR is setting the standard. I wish more of our high school graduates would have pre-employment transition services as well. If there are no more questions, then we do recommend this final action item, and thank you so much, ladies. We'll move now to 3.5B, Educational Opportunities and Access. And this has to deal B1 with a contract with HSMC Horizon LLC to conduct procedure reviews at a cost of $52,200. And this is a federal program, and Shannon's coming today, not Sharon and Diane Stumer.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Shannon Wilkinson. I'm the Assistant Director for Nutrition Services Division, sitting in for Sharon, who does oversee the CACFP program or the Child and Adult Care Food Program. Federal regulation, 7 CFR 226, requires us to do a federal auditing of our for-profit daycare centers. And we have 33 centers that are, we're looking at, I mean, a threshold that we've set of $35,000 of reimbursement funds. So with the CACFP program, centers that provide meals to children submit reimbursement claims to our office. And if those claims are excess, in excess of $35,000, we need to go out and do a financial audit on them annually. And so we are asking to extend the contract with Horizon. Our initial contract with them was done in 2016. And so we're looking at a renewal year, for a year renewal year, and we're looking to renew with them. We've had a really great experience with them. They've been involved with some investigations that we've had to do with some of our CACFP providers. They did a really fantastic job, and they were very helpful. So we would like to continue to use them in the future for this current year.
Board members, any questions? Yes.
This is an easy one. So this is for just one year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the committee does recommend approving this item. Let's go to 3.5B.2. And you're still, Diana's still here. Diane Stan and Jan Hand is coming up. And this deals with funding recommendations for federally funded 21st Century Community Learning Centers and the grant program. Take it away.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Well, what you have in front of you would be the recommendations from an external review for funding of these after-school and in many cases, summer programs. 21st Century Community Learnings is a competitive grant program. It's federal funding through ESA. We're Title IV Part B. And we have been awarding grants for 15 years. So we have quite a bit of history behind us. We've learned a few things along the ways. As you look at the background information that I provided, you'll see our three main goals with the 21st Century program. And we currently, this past year, we have 136 sites that are located all across the state. As you look at the list of who we're recommending, up in the first-time grants, those are sites that have never been awarded a grant. And all of these dollar amounts are a per-year amount, and these are five-year grants. So the first-time grants are funded at a rate of $5 a day for after-school, $7.50 if it's summer. The longer list of the continuation applicants, these are sites where they've already had a successful five-year grant. And because we've been in operation 15 years, some of them have been open five years, some have been 10, and some have been 15 years. And for the continuation grants are funded at 50% of the amount. So they get $2.50 a day for after-school, $3.75 for a longer program. In the committee meeting earlier, we had a little bit of a conversation about high school programs. That is a new venture for us, but we currently do have four high school programs. Burke will make the fifth one. And I did go back and look at our 136 sites. In addition to the four high schools, we have 27 middle schools. So those programs look a little bit different than the, well, they look a lot different than an elementary program. But they do a lot of career exploration and career readiness. They might be, you know, working on how you apply for scholarships for college and that type of thing. So these programs really are there to meet the needs of the local community. We're very reliant on our community partners. We could not possibly run programs on such a small amount that the 21st Century provides. So they really are a reflection of the local communities that are helping support them.
Board members, are there any questions?
So do you have communities, districts, communities apply for these that you cannot award grants to?
In order to be eligible, the free reduced lunch rate has to be 40% or greater. And I did, just to give you a sense of who we serve, we had about 20,000 students. twenty thousand students last year. And seventy-four percent of those students are eligible for free or reduced lunch. About fifteen percent are English learners and about eighteen percent are verified for special education. So, we feel that we're really doing what we should be doing to target those media students that really would benefit from an, you know, an enriching opportunity after school that they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford.
So, last year, I understood you to say you served twenty thousand students out of all those grants.
Uh-huh.
It's awesome.
Amazing. Any other comments or questions? I did want to just highlight something that I think is so important. If you look at those three bullet points, what your program does, it's so much in alignment with AQUEST because it's expanded learning opportunities. And I love it that you're going also into the high school now, and it's in alignment with career tech expansion and also community engagement in viable opportunities for employment. And the last bullet point about, um, meaningful family and community engagement and supporting students' education. I think if, if you ever have a chance in your districts to visit schools that have Twenty First Century learning, if you see the parents there with their children, there's a great pride. It isn't just a drop-off place. It's in alignment with our vision, mission, and goals. We recommend approval, and thank you very much. We'll now move on to three point five B, point three. And this deals with the twenty eighteen, nineteen school, um, operation of non-public schools pursuant to Rule fourteen. And Don Loski and Kim Snyder.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Loski from the Office of Accountability, Accreditation, and Program Approval.
And I'm Kim Snyder from the same office.
And so, according to Title ninety-two, Chapter fourteen, Regulations and Procedures for the Legal Operations of Approved Non-Public Schools, continued approval for non-public schools is granted for one school year from each July first through the following June thirtieth. Renewal is granted based upon the school's compliance with Rule fourteen during the prior school year, which would be the seventeen eighteen. You have been provided with a list of non-public schools that have demonstrated compliance with Rule fourteen for the seventeen eighteen school year. We are here to recommend that you grant the commissioner the authority to approve these non-public schools to operate for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year pursuant to Rule fourteen regulations and procedures.
Any questions from the group? Yeah, Mo, go ahead, Mo.
Okay, so when the school sends you back the information, is this done through a checklist? Is it done through sharing data? How is it done?
What, what information do you need?
Oh, the assurance to be approved. So, every year, they submit an assurance statement at the, in the fall. I think that's-
What does that statement look like?
It's a, it's a paper copy of a, basically, they just check off in the areas where they are out of compliance. And then they explain to us why they're out of compliant, what their plan is to fix, so that they are in compliance. And then it's signed by the head teacher, and if it's, if they don't have a principal, and then the head of it.
So, do you go out, at the end of the school year, do they submit that they have accomplished this, if they said they were going to do it then?
They will, we will follow up. We follow up. They don't submit anything, but if they put something on their assurance statement that says that they're out of compliance, we definitely follow up on that and make sure that it has been taken care of.
I'd like to make a clarifying comment, because actually accreditation staff members do actually conduct visits to selected schools.
We do.
So, you don't just do this remotely and, and call them on the phone?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And there are questions?
Well, I was going to ask the same question, but do you do this more frequently with these schools than you do with other schools that we accredit? And is there a-
No.
Is there a cycle? Is it every five years or every-
There isn't a set cycle, but we do, we do look at the list and, and we base where we go, um, generally on where, how long it's been since they've been visited. So, there's been a few that haven't been visited for a while, so we try to get to those. We've done seven, um, non-public Rule fourteens this year, and that's just the ones that we've traveled to. Now, we have phone calls galore all the time. We're talking to schools all the time on the phone and, and what we can do to help them out. And of course, if we ever get complaints, then we take care of that right away. But, um, we do a, a lot of, um, over-the-phone stuff too.
Thank you.
Yes, question, Lisa.
So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So, there isn't a regular cycle that you visit so many schools each year or every three years or every four years? They're just kind of on their own for a while?
Well, correct. We don't, um, as far as the number of schools that we can get to, um, just because there's two or three of us that are visiting schools here. And so, we try to get twenty-five to thirty-five schools actually visited every year.
Wow.
Which is across the state, you know, we definitely make sure that we have Rule fourteen, Rule eighteen, Rule ten schools, accredited schools across the state.
I was just concerned about the approval.
In, in Rule fourteen, it says, "School site reviews, the State Department of Education staff shall conduct periodic onsite visits," so that it's not a schedule.
Yeah, I just wondered, you know, I know that's there. And with an approved school, I just wondered how often that was. So, thank you.
I think Lisa brings up a, a good point in the context of, um, differentiating between approved schools and accredited schools. Uh, and I guess I just got to thinking in this conversation, um, are parents informed that their school is approved as opposed to accredited? I sometimes wonder if, if people understand the difference, in particularly parents and communities, um, because there's really a difference as it relates to the standards and expectations of what schools do and meet. So, I didn't know if we ever communicate out or publicize out, um, a little more on the difference between approved schools and accredited schools.
Well, we don't currently.
Yeah.
We send the letter, there will be a letter sent to each of the schools stating that they are-
Right.
Meet approval status. And, uh, what they do with that information would be the same thing for the Rule ten schools that receive the similar letter, but saying that they are accredited.
I'd like to highlight some information for the other board members. Um, if you look at the second attachment, I find this very interesting. It's ninety-six elementary grades and it's only nine secondary. So, I thought it was very prudent that you'd mentioned this morning that a lot of the elementary school children in these non-public schools then fuse into our high schools. And that, and then they really are in, then they are in alignment with Rule ten. Also, you'll notice a lot of these are private parochial. Um, but I thought, I wanted to compliment Omaha, the Omaha Archdiocese, because they've chosen to be Rule ten accredited. And I do think Rachel makes a good point. Uh, accreditation shows an additional impetus, especially when it's not funded. So, um, are there any other questions? Uh, our, our committee does, does recommend approval, and you're doing a great job. There are only three of you? Well, yes. Thank you so much.
I only counted two right here.
Who's your third member?
Uh, Brad Connor.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I'm going to move to Melody. And this has to deal with revision of the Early Learning Guidelines. And this is exciting. Oh, they're all exciting, but this is early learning and we have Melody, so we have a happy moment here.
I am Melody Hobson. I am the Director of the Office of Early Childhood Education. And I did bring the Early Learning Guidelines for discussion. Um, the Early Learning Guidelines are Nebraska's early childhood standards for children birth to age five. Um, they, we've had Early Learning Guidelines for fifteen years or so across the state. This is a revision. Um, we have, we embarked on the revision. We did hire, um, a, someone who, an expert in the field, to be the primary writer. But we had, um, a number of committees that, you know, that provided input, that provided feedback, and worked with through the process. Um, some of them internal to the office and some of them external or partners. Um, as you'll notice, there are seven Early Learning Guideline domains. We consider each of them to be equally important. Um, they are science, creative arts, social and emotional development, approaches to learning, health and physical development, language and literacy development, and mathematics. And so, um, we are, if you have a chance within the next month to look at the, the document, you'll see that there is an introduction to each section and why it's important. The guidelines have what children should know and be able to do from birth to age five. Um, we've tried to make it, make it very easy to look at. We did have two documents in the past. We've put them all together so that you can see the whole progression from birth to age five. Um, in the back, there is a set of, um, kind of alignments. Um, we, we did align to, to items in the K twelve standards. Um, we also, they are aligned to the Head Start Learning and Development Framework. Um, you'll, so you'll see some of that. There, we've also tried to make some other changes because we do have, um, early childhood teachers and providers who may have everything from a high school diploma to master's degrees in education, early childhood. Um, we do know that it's important that the, that the academic language that you use with young children is important, if they're four as well as if they're fourteen. And to do, to be able to do that, you have to have that academic language yourself. So, we have, um, added more specific academic language where it fits in, within the, um, materials for the adults. Um, there is a glossary, because some of those are words that many of our childhood providers have probably never heard before. Um, many of them they have, but, but there are some, some new ones. We are trying to, as we say, professionalize the field, and this is one small step to do that. Each of the guidelines does have information on how to include children with disabilities in, in inclusive settings and how to support their development, as well as how to support the development in language of children who are dual-language learners from birth to five. So, um, I'd be willing to, happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions or comments? No? Yeah, okay. I saw that smile, Pat. Mo.
They're good.
They're good.
Melody, uh, is there an opportunity for us to each get a hard copy of this?
I can give that, I can, I can give that for you.
That would be awesome.
I understand that there-
I'm not very good with reading all these things on the internet or the computer screen.
Before you leave, I, I want to just compliment our early childhood representatives that were here a little early. Did you notice a little earlier, we had some representation from first five? I, I, Melody, I just want to say, your leadership in early childhood has been instrumental in, in really making this a great place to be a baby. And, um, I think that step up to quality is one of the coolest things I've ever seen, where local daycare providers didn't feel like they were going to be estranged and put away. Instead, they can step up quality with incentives and support. And if you really think back to the earlier conversation from Dr. Freisen about the reading components and early intervention support, you were thinking about that in, you know, PK, zero to eight years old. So, uh, your leadership is very valued and we appreciate it. And I did want to tell you, the committee recommends this item, come as an action item, and we vote, um, we will be voting on this next month. It isn't an action item tomorrow, but next month. And if you want a hard copy, let her know, because there are a lot of pages.
One twenty-seven.
So, read it online if you can, otherwise, please speak with Melody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Our report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting in regards to action item except the twenty seventeen single audit report, where you have the opportunity of Mr. Bryce Wilson, give us a briefing on that. And to add, we also got action item number three point six point B, grant the commissioner authority to purchase new and replacement computer equipment, software licenses, and maintenance agreements for NDE PK twelve programs. And I'm sorry I didn't recognize Mr. Tyboree Moldovan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the, the single audit that is going to come up for an action item tomorrow, um, basically is the report out on that is an annual report, or annual audit that we have, one of the many. Um, last month, we were here with the CAFR audit, the Financial Statement Audit. Um, this is, the single audit is the federal programs audit. Uh, basically, any program over a certain threshold, we have to have audited. The auditor's, state auditor's office does that for us. Um, they also, there's another kind of threshold in there where certain programs rotate every so many years, every three years, they have to audit programs. This was our big year where a whole lot of programs got audited. Um, we did have six findings that were noted. The, the vast majority of the items noted on those findings were documentation-related, um, not that we're doing, paying out incorrect amounts to wrong things or anything like that. It's just a matter of, um, keeping documentation that the auditors would like to see. So, corrective action plans have already been addressed for, for the majority of those things. Were a couple items that we, we disagreed on based on federal guidance and just program experts. Um, and we noted that in, in our management response. Um, and those will be pushed up to the federal government. They will review those reports, and if they have problems with that, they'll notify us, and then we will, um, make, uh, corresponding correction plans that satisfy their needs. So.
Thank you very much, Bryce. And also, I'd like to say that, uh, the committee recommended approval of the audit. Thank you very much. Shane, would you like to brief us on the purchase?
Certainly. Uh, Tibor Moldovan and his team on the Office of Technical Services has put together our annual computer hardware purchase plan and software for the upcoming year. We bring this to you in the springtime, so that way we can utilize any unexpended general funds before the end of the year to help offset those purchases. Um, we currently utilize a five-year lifecycle on computers, printers, and monitors to maximize their usage. Um, those will be paid out of either general funds for those employees out of that category, or by federal grants for those employees working on that. It also includes significant software purchases, um, EdFAX for the NISERS program, and also the, I apologize, the E-scol, or Qualtrics for the EBA AQUEST program. Um, so those are significant software outlays that we utilize for important programs in the department. It also includes some significant charges with, uh, the Department of Administrative Services OCIO office for server, uh, storage space, backup, and redundancies. And with that, Tibor probably could handle any, uh, technical questions if there are some?
I'm afraid he could.
Yes, Molly, please.
Tibor, I'm just kind of interested, uh, viewing your rotation, there are going to be some software that probably isn't going to be reused, but the, probably the hardware. Are you, are you giving it to schools, or reselling it, or reusing it?
Um, so, we have to send it to state, uh, material for, uh, surplus, and they sell it at the auction quarterly, I believe.
Sounds we're bringing revenue back to the state. Okay, thank you.
Good. That's great.
Any other questions? If not, we've also approved, uh, the committee also has approved this equipment purchase. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving along, Patricia, please report on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting.
Uh, we had two discussion items this morning and, and had some real in-depth discussion on both of them. And I'd like to ask Diane and Lane to come up and just give us a brief synopsis. As you know by your agenda, tomorrow afternoon, we will all get an in-depth discussion of ESA as well. So, this is just a quickie.
It's a quick, down and dirty. I'm Diane Steamer, and my partner is?
Lane Carr.
We've been running into each other a lot lately. So, um, the ESA plan work continues. Uh, USDE has some remaining questions and clarifications that, um, mostly we've been communicating via email, but we've had some, uh, phone conversations. We've had some webinar type of situations. So, we are in pretty regular contact with USDE on that. Well, a couple of the questions they had, um, one of them was on the disproportionate rates to the access of teachers. And Janine, Tyler has been working on that. And we sent a proposal on a plan to, um, show how we're going to use that data, and they approved that. So, we're ready to move forward up with that one. Um, one of the big pieces they still have questions on is a meaningful differentiation. And that is the tool that will be used for identifying schools for comprehensive support and improvement, um, which is just Title One schools. And that's the lowest five percent performing, lowest performing five percent of Title One schools that will be identified, um, as eligible for comprehensive school, uh, support and improvement. I've said school improvement for so long, it's hard to get that support and improvement. I've said school improvement for so long, it's hard to get that support and improvement. The other piece under that meaningful differentiation is the targeted support and improvement, and that is, it identifies underperforming subgroups of all students in every school, not just Title I schools, but all students go into that calculation. And the subgroups that are included in that are the economically disadvantaged students, students from the major racial and ethnic groups, children with disabilities, and English learners. And there is an additional targeted support, and that applies to any subgroup of students that on its own would be identified under the comprehensive support and improvement. So the issue with identifying schools is that AQuest does not rank schools, which was intentional. And so it's challenging for us to identify the lowest performing five percent of schools because we don't rank schools. So we've been working with ways to come up with, without having that ranking system. Lane has pulled lots of models from different states. The feds have actually recommended different states for us to look at that they think may fit with our system, but we certainly want to keep the integrity of AQuest as we move forward. So you want to talk about the special group?
Yeah, last week, we had an opportunity to pull together a diverse group of stakeholders from around the state, representing school boards, teachers, principals, superintendents from the four kind of categories of our schools. And we had a great conversation about AQuest and how we can update and align it, and really it validated a lot of the work that we have put into ESSA, and we heard a lot of positives about the things that we're proposing. And they were looking forward to getting it approved just as much as we are. I think maybe not as much as we are. But just really so that they can, so we can communicate, and that was one of the most important pieces from that is, I think we had a lot of stakeholders who, for the first time, understood how complex AQuest and school improvement and processes around getting what we need for kids really is. And what they want from us, I think, became very clear, was just to communicate and have real genuine dialogue back and forth. So I think, once we get this plan approved, I think the real work actually begins, so.
All right, and we will have much more discussion. Tomorrow afternoon about the ESSA plan. Thank you.
Can I add just one thing? First of all, thanks to Diane and Lane and everyone that's been working on the ESSA plan, and you've seen my updates on occasion, and it gets to, we work in a kind of this level of detail on getting a federal plan approved, but I think, I think both Diane and Lane said this well, maintaining the integrity of AQuest is really where we're at. The thoughtfulness that went into the AQuest system, because we desired to have a system that didn't just rank and sort and blame, I think is the line I remember from Molly, we're not out to be in a position where we're labeling schools with the intention of blaming them for the positions that they happen to be in. And I think the fine point on this one, and I think this is where we really kind of come to some agreement with the understanding of where the federal government needs to be relative to approving our plan, is we're really identifying those schools that are going to need this support, right? We're trying to take and make the best use and leverage the federal funds to support schools in Nebraska, and that's what this is about. And so I think it's, you know, it's important work for us to continue. We've invested a lot of time and energy, and I mean, we being the board and the department as a whole, on laying out a philosophy of what this next generation accountability system is, and I think we can be quite proud of that. I reflect on the fact that we have the tenants as posters here in this room, and I think to myself, we're changing the dialogue in Nebraska about what it takes to improve schools and where we should spend our time and energy to do that. So thank you for the continued efforts on those fronts, and I probably don't say thanks to them enough either, so, or anyone probably, but thanks.
Good job, thank you. Our other discussion item was centered around our priority schools, so Matt and Dr. Freisen will give us an update on what we.
Yeah, I'll start and see if I can be corrected or not. And I'm sure I can.
No chance.
No chance, okay. First of all, I think it's important that we, given, the board had an opportunity to hear the response from Skylar last month, and I hope you had a chance to review some of the materials and the things along those lines. You know, and I probably feel like all of you, I mean, I hurt with them, right, relative to any sting that came out of the designation of priority school. I think, however, most important is that our work is really about, just like we talked on the ESSA plan, really in what we've done on AQuest, really finding ways that we actually support all of their improvement efforts and those things, and being intentional about that. I've had great conversations with Rich Brabeck, who is the board president at Skylar. The intention of, we'll actually reach out, we're working on a process in which we'll actually sit down with their administrative team and offer to sit down with their full board if that's something that he would like to have me do or us do relative to that particular plan. We'll have Dr. Kennedy that will be part of the diagnostic review process, like we've done in other priority schools. And I want you to know that it's also important in our work with Skylar that they are actually a school improvement grant recipient, and that was part of the dialogue that we've had with them. In the past, I might have thought about the SIG grant process, you know, being the old process, and now we're here trying to build the new one. Well, we want that to come together in the most powerful way for Skylar and for the improvement of the educational opportunities for students within Skylar, and we'll continue to do that. So we'll have our first opportunities to really be in the school and start the intervention team process in April. We'll probably have more on that for you in May for, on those fronts. We also will have updates actually on the other priority school work, I think in May and June, I'm not quite sure exactly how that will timeline out, but between those two months, you'll see updates on our current work in those other two places. I think I've highlighted to you before the importance of working with boards at these districts as well as administration, as well as with staff, and really taking that holistic approach has been important, and so no different with Skylar. But I just wanted to give you an update that that work's ongoing. You know, it's never, it's never easy in these fronts, and we're trying to think of ways how we improve that communication in the front end of these processes too, and we take that to heart as well in what we've communicated with and heard from Skylar in this case, so. So that's my update in a nutshell, I guess, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to board reports, dates, discussion items. We will now have the opportunity for board members to provide brief report on recent meetings they have attended since the March board meeting. If you have nothing to report, feel free to pass. This month, we're discussing the NASB Legislative Conference. Did you have anything more to add, Dr. Wise?
I think we've pretty well covered it in our legislative committee. Yes, to be continued after homework, thank you, Molly, yes.
I'd like to discuss the NERCs of Spring Conference, March 22 through the 23th, eighteen at the Holiday Inn and Convention Center in Carney, Nebraska. We were fortunate to have Lisa, Patrick, Rachel, and I attended, and we did have active engagement and participation, whether it be briefings or receiving briefings from everybody. I'd like to commend the NDE staff for providing exceptional briefings also, but it was very positive exchanges for sure. But the one I'd like to, if you will, just quick note on was, the Nebraska State Trooper, State Patrol gave a, if you will, a response protocol briefing. The title was civilian response to an active killer element. And basically, it was a lot of information awareness to be provided to us, and its mission or goal was to avoid, deny, and defend. And just down the hallway was another, if you will, briefing by NDE in regards to, if you will, response protocols. I just hope that these two individuals, and I'm sure it's going to go that way, will match up in collaboration with the law enforcement task force to come up with one response protocol that can be used by everybody. But it looked like the Nebraska State Patrol, they really had a good program going, but it's got to be shared and worked with others. Does anybody else have comments in regards to that?
Yes, I'd like to, I attended both of those safety sessions with the state trooper, and what I thought was really interesting, and you know, primarily, this group deals in the rural areas, but the dedication, it seems, of those troopers to go to the schools and actually learn the floor plans and talk to people so that they know in advance, and again, this is just good preparation, know in advance if they're called there, and they're probably the first ones to be called there, exactly what the layout of the school is, where the gym is, where, you know, where everything is. And I think that was very important, and yeah, and it seems that they're making a real effort in rural Nebraska to get out there and actually visit the schools and know what's going on. I thought that was really important.
Rachel?
I just want to comment on what NERCs does, and I appreciate what they're doing around their research projects in schools, rural schools that are closing achievement gaps. And they do a really nice recognition program for schools that are having an impact on closing the gap. And so I just think we should acknowledge the role NERCs is playing in addressing student achievement in our rural schools.
Lisa?
I just thought it was a great conference, and I appreciate exactly what she said. I mean, if you left there not feeling comfortable, it's your own fault because there was so much explanation, examples, and very current issues that we can put to use as we make decisions in the future, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, yes.
I just want one more shot here. Some of us attended NERCs Legislative Committee meeting as well last month, and then we attended this, and you know, I think there's an opportunity as we, and again, I'm going back to the Legislative Committee, as we look at these fellow stakeholders and these people that, you know, really, we're part of, and we ought to be listening to them this summer as we put this together and figure out what our legislative plan is, because they've got valuable input. We're not always going to be able to agree, have everybody agree on where we're going or what needs to be done, but it's very important to get their input and for us to be listening to what they, what they feel their legislative needs are as we address our committee efforts in the fall.
Thank you. Henry? Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I'm going to piggyback because it was tied with NERCs, basically, and thank Patsy for hosting a little bit of an introduction to the state speech contest for us. The couple, Pat, myself, the commissioner, spent a little time, and it is impressive to see all the great student activities, and in particularly, the kids that were involved in speech, the state speech.
Yes.
I want to thank them for going because a lot of times, we recognize other extracurricular activities, and there's sometimes an imbalance in that, and having you there, they announced their names as being there before we ever got back from the final round that I took them to. But the students were pretty impressed that you would take time out of your day and come watch them, and they certainly took you on an emotional roller coaster ride, as the commissioner said in that round of poetry, so thank you very much for taking the time to show them how much you care.
Since you got the podium, would you like to brief us on the FFA delegate breakfast this morning?
Yes, I had a wonderful time with some kids from Oskoche and from Kimball and the Kimball. And the Kimball kids didn't know who their senator was, so I made them ask Siri, and then I went and got their senator and brought him over to the table, Senator Erdman, and they had their pictures taken with him, and they promised me to go back and teach civics by teaching the rest of the kids who their senator was. It was a great experience.
That's awesome.
Does anybody else have, go ahead, please, Rachel?
We'll pick up FFA also, and great kids at the table. Pat and I sat at the same table this morning, we're both at the same table as some kids from Alliance, from Southern Valley, from Palisades, Juanita, Juanita, Palisades, Banner County, trying to go, Shadrin, around the table. But we had just a great discussion and gathered some really important input from kids and the view kids have about what we should be doing, and they gave us some great advice, very articulate young people.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Patrick.
I'd agree with that, and it was really interesting to hear from these students because they, you know, they were concerned about how good is my school doing as far as preparing me for my career and my future? I mean, that's one of the, one of the concerns that was brought up. One of the concerns was, you know, the adequacy of the teachers that are teaching some of the subjects in those areas, and when the students are asking you that question or talking about that, I think there's a message for all of us in that, and we've got to do a better job.
Thank you.
One young man told me, I thought you guys would appreciate this, I think Scott Summers, you were part of this too, that he already knew parliamentary procedure, he wouldn't have to learn that when he got to.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now we will start the individual reports.
Oh, John?
Yes.
I thought we were just, we were going to talk about other places.
Other places, yes, please.
Oh, okay. The Innovation Summit in Omaha, Lane Carr was in charge of that, and some others. And I thought it was interesting, I'm so glad I went, five times during this whole, from eight o'clock until noon, five times, it was mentioned about behavioral mental health in relationship to innovation education. More and more, this is coming to the forefront, and we need to be talking about, well, not just talking, but doing something about that. And then somebody volunteered this, I was shocked when he said it, he said, "In it," and this is from the audience, "Innovation is not best practices." And I thought, well, you can use best practices to make innovation great. So I just threw that out there because it kind of surprised me that that thought process was out there. And just a couple of more things, they had panels of business people, people who partner to help kids in careers and technology, and again, repeatedly, relationships are the key to getting things done, and I believe that so firmly. And they talked about, once you get the money from the businesses, the foundations, or wherever, keep in mind that sustainability. Once you get the grant and you do great things, think before you ever get the grant or apply, how are you going to sustain it for the kids? Find new ways of meeting goals in that innovation story. And another thing, school and teachers are, it's really hard for teachers to do this, but tell your great stories about what's going on in your classroom with your students. The public needs to know, just like Patsy and, well, all of you showcasing kids here. Teachers need to do more of it from their individual schools. But those are just some highlights that I took away from the Innovation Conference that was very, very inspiring.
Thank you, Patricia.
This will kind of hopefully reassure those of you that were in Washington DC talking about early childhood. The Early Childhood State Commission is about a year and a half through their three-year process, and it's time to do some reflection on what we've done in the last year and a half and what we're going to do in the next year and a half. And so just a brief, I don't have the whole packet yet because it hasn't been sent out, but there's going to be, we're now ready to do an action plan. We've had our discussion, now it's time to talk about action in the state of Nebraska. And so that will be our focus in the coming months. And there's kind of going to be a reorganization of the groups that we work in, and those three things are certainly, and I'll list those, they're going to cross over each other. They're not going to be just, you're on this committee and you're on this committee, but there will be a great deal of discussion about the workforce itself and the specialized knowledge and skills that are needed in that workforce. And then to move on to that with the funding, there needs to be sustainable resources for this, and to adequately compensate our people that are in early childhood, which they are not right now, and then also a public. And then also a public commitment to early childhood. There has been discussion over the last year that, you know, a lot of people don't really understand the importance of early childhood, you know, we need to keep our children home until they're five or whatever. And one of the things that I think will, I've been very pleased with, and we do this when we do things too, but there's been a lot of discussion with the people in the field as to what they need and what they would like to move forward with. And probably one of the most interesting sessions that we had was having caregivers come in. We had a private caregiver, we had a center-based caregiver, we had, you know, a home-based caregiver and all of that. And to listen to them as to what they were doing and how they were doing it, and the difference in how they were treated, both professionally and how they were paid. And so there's a, I think, about a year and a half from now, you'll see some real action things that will come. Susan and I talked the other day about the things that we can do through rules rather than legislation, that we have, you know, some control over. So, and there's a lot of people involved. HHS is involved, business is involved. There's a real diversity of the group across the state. It isn't just educators. So, it's going well, so.
Patsy.
Well, I had a whole bunch of places that I went, but I'm going to come down, so you have to listen to all of it. But I happen to be one of them. I was invited to Campbell Elementary School for their monthly awards, and I promised them that I would talk about them today. So, I'm talking about Campbell Elementary. But it was an amazing hour and a half, two hours, whatever, it was their awards thing that they do monthly. And the sixth graders take leadership, and they presented a play on, that they wrote about spreading rumors and how much it hurts people. And they sort of guided the whole system through. They were really leaders, great leaders. And I got my picture taken with them at their request at the end of the thing, and lots of hugs, which I really liked. Then they presented the awards, and I thought it was so good the way they did it. They recognized kids for academic achievement, they recognized kids for improvement in academics, they recognized kids for doing special, special things for other human beings, being empathetic and kind. I mean, the way they divided it up, the humanity, and it was so part of the pedigree of what they were trying to do, was really great. And then the sixth graders, just in case you want to know how really great they are when they graduate from Campbell, they took all of the seating that they were using, were on the floor most of the time, that they stayed afterwards and set up the lunchroom and were happy and staying all the way through it. So I helped a little bit with that, too. And then I was lucky enough to go to Central City and see The Lion King.
Wow. Beauty and the Beast. Beauty and the Beast.
Or, I'm sorry, I saw The Lion.
I didn't know that was there.
I saw The Beast there. I saw The Lion King with my granddaughter, so that's why, it was quite wonderful, too. And it was starring our Commissioner's daughter, who was absolutely wonderful. And the theater is absolutely beautiful at Central City, an amazing tribute to the community.
Your daughter was Beauty?
Yeah, yeah. And quite wonderful.
They're ten somewhere there, not from my side.
And then, I have other things, but I think I'll stop there. Those were two wonderful moments in the month.
Thank you, Patsy.
Yeah.
Does anybody else? Mo.
Besides seeing Beauty and The Beast at my own school district I pay my taxes into, and yes, the community has really come together for a family-school-community partnership with their Performing Arts Center that is truly state-of-the-art. And so kudos to them. Yesterday, I was part of the Fine Arts Summit, Part Two of the Fine Arts Summit that Debbie DeFrain here at the NDE headed up. That was just outstanding with educators and folks from different arts groups, art groups from across the state. And we're going to be working, let's see, Patsy was there, and Lisa.
And Molly.
And myself, and Molly. And when, we broke up into our groups, I was working on policy, my group was policy. And probably three times in two and a half hours, it was brought forth that in all the years that the different people have been doing things, they have never had state board members attend their arts things. And how pleased they were that the state board members were present and helping to ensure that the fine arts would stay strong in our schools. And I'm sure that the others can mention something as well. But I also wanted to mention, this week is World Languages Week, and David Jespersen yesterday sent out a news release on that. And there is a website that's on our NDE website. And if you haven't taken the time to look at it, you need to. There are 26 students that are exemplified, that were honored with their world language accomplishments across the state. And I think you will be shocked when you read their short excerpts of some of the languages that these students have taught themselves, that they are teaching classmates, and just the exceptional job, again, telling our story across the state of students in our high schools that are not just seniors, but freshmen, sophomores, that are truly exceptional. So I really urge you to take that time to do it. And kudos to those school districts that have world languages, a foreign language in their school district.
Thank you, Mo. Anybody else? Rachel?
Two quick items. One, I had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Nick Pace yesterday, who is the new Dean of the, or, Chair of the Education, what's his?
Education Administration.
Thank you.
What is it? Say it again.
Dr. Nick Pace, Chair of the Educational Administration Department at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. If you get a chance to meet with him, he has actually been to one of our meetings, you might want to do so. And he's new to Nebraska and is really, I think, trying to understand the regulatory environment of Nebraska and the landscape of Nebraska. And so if you get a chance to meet with him, you may want to do so. The other quick thing is, I believe, John, you've received the information from NASB for the awards processes.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be something we might want to consider over the next, between now and May, if we want to submit any nominees for the NASB awards.
Good idea.
I believe we submitted a nominee last year. And I think we should consider submitting again this year.
Super. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the innovation event that we attended to. I thought Matt, I thought Matt did a great job in his introduction. We've got some great handouts that I think it'd be nice if everybody on the, on the board got, if they don't have them. And the new video, I would hope that we'll have a chance to have the board see that video because it's really good. Thank you.
That's great, Pat, that you brought that along. I agree with you 100% on those.
Is there a digital copy of that that we could, Denise could send to us? If we don't have a.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring it.
Anybody else? Molly.
I just have a protocol question. On 4.2, these are meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. Does that need to have a motion tomorrow to be approved?
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, I did want to talk about that item when you get to it.
Thank you. Good idea. Anybody else have a visit? I would just like to thank Carriage Hill Elementary School in Papillion, Nebraska, for, I think it was the week of reading, I got to go in some elementary classes and read some books to the students, and that was a thrill. So, thank you, Carriage Hill. Thank you very much. Moving on, tomorrow, we will vote on requests to approve attendance at meetings that took place in the past and were not previously approved. There will be two meeting approval requests for that. So that answers your question, Molly. The request for future meeting attendance travel from board members.
Before you leave that, though, could I make a comment on that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay. I didn't know where to say this. It's back to the meeting that four of us were attending on fine arts. I just wanted to give you a heads up for the four of you that were not in attendance. It was the International Quilt Center. It was a beautiful forum, and actually, it was a very affordable place for nonprofit groups to hold meetings. I wanted to thank NDE, they provided the lunch. You had great representation in your staff that took meetings. Carol Baum was wonderful. And also, I did want to say that we had three different groups. I was in People and Places, and you were in Policy, and then we had the third group.
Programs.
Programs. And would you share, do you mind if she shares a little about programs? And if there's anything left, I'll comment.
Join me, Lisa.
Both of you, two are both programs, right?
Molly, if you want to go ahead, we'll just play off of each other. But programs was about, what are, how are we going to create relationships with higher ed? What expectations are we going to have for people who are teaching these? How are we going to make that happen? How can we be more than just integrated into other classes for students that might have a gift or a talent in one of those fields? Your turn.
Research, getting the research out there, not only nationally, but we have a school that exemplifies how much the arts can improve attendance, climate, just so many things. The national statistics are out there, but we need to gather statistics from Nebraska because Nebraskans, you know, tend to want, we're independent, and that's a good thing. So, that's really important. And then they talked about getting the arts into all the academics throughout the state, and it was like, let's take this one step at a time. Let's pilot three schools, different sizes, and track some data, and we created some steps to do that. So many great ideas, not enough time to share, but the arts can make a true difference in so many students' lives because it, you can teach for a test, but when you teach with the arts, it's lifelong learning maintained to help you in your career, college, just living life better.
I love the conversation about data because, having been a person in the arts all of my life, I've had evaluations where somebody came in and said, "Well, that's nice," because they didn't know what to do with what I was teaching. However, I think that's our fault, those people in the arts, those of us who are in the arts. And what we have to search for is the data, the numbers that set up why, how much we affect attendance, and not just say, "Well, it's good for kids, it's a good thing, they like it, it's fun," that kind of thing. We have to do more than that. And so, when she brings that word "data" up, that's very important, and I think we're going to be working on that.
Rachel.
As you work on that, I think you should talk to the Career and Tech Ed folks. Because when you look at the requirements of Perkins, and we probably don't look at that data enough, but it's very similar in the sense of students who have participated in Career and Tech Ed classes and programs, they do a great job in the data they pull together to show the success of those students. And I would say there's a corollary for the arts.
We're already modeling ourselves after them.
Right. So I think there could be value in creating a reporting process, even though that's required for feds, who cares if it's required? Use a process that works well and apply it to the arts would be very valuable.
Okay.
And they're trying to create, whoops, I was just going to play off of both of that, those things.
Yeah.
The idea that they're working, the fine arts standards are going to be revised in 2020, I believe. And so they're working on a way to include the fine arts in Rule 10. And they developed three strands of how to get to that point. And so the timing of it is, the first year, we'll do this, the second year, and then that third year, you know, right after the standards are revised, they want it in Rule 10, and they're developing a path for that.
Thank you, Lisa. And Molly, you're it.
Closing comments. I did want to also say, coming from the People and the Place concept, what exactly is the goal of fine arts? Is it just to infuse it throughout the curriculum? Why? And my group talked about, why do we want to do that? And it goes back to the beginning this day, when I was at an early, early meeting in legislation, and you all were talking about the world of the future is different than the world of the now, and jobs now are going to be different than they will be 20 years from now. And John, when the state board in the next, in the coming years talks about fine arts standards, I'm just going to hit some big points here. We need to infuse them because that's going to build our workforce, but also, it's going to expand job opportunities in Nebraska. And if we bring fine arts technical skills in alignment with what we've done with CTE and revision, I really believe there'll be companies coming to Nebraska for our graduates because they're capable people and they're able to fill those voids in their job opportunities. And you already talked about the Rule 10 incorporation. In visiting with Corey, he told the whole group that if we incorporate fine arts into Rule 10, that it would be also wise to consider, we passed physical education standards and career tech education standards. So if we do this, let's make sure in alignment with AQuest, and we do it in a way that doesn't propose an undue burden and is appropriate for rural and urban. And then just two complimentary things. They talked about supplemental endorsements in dance, media arts, music, art, and theater. One of the teachers said, "There is no masters in theater in Nebraska." She has to take it online in Vermont or something. So it goes back to one of you saying, our teachers sometimes are not capable in the areas of their job descriptions. So, they're talking about working with ESU cadres to have a specialist. And then finally, they were talking about fine arts course codes through Rule 24, and I don't know, Matt, if that'll come up with your policy committee, but I would give you a heads up on that. And the final thing is, I hope that we work with our ESU coordinating council because they'll be an important function, providing those teachers with expertise to our small schools that can't afford a full-time theater or music or media arts consultant.
Can I say, one last thing? It's so important.
Make it quick.
Why the arts? I shared an article with my group about Google. And when you think of Google, you think of technology. They surveyed all of, wherever in the company, and the top skill was not their technical skills. Their top skills, top five skills, were creativity, problem-solving, critical thinking, empathy, cooperation and collaboration.
And conflict resolution.
Yes. Oh, yeah, conflict. So, it's, that's why the arts, the soft skills, that helps nurture that. So, anyway, I'm done.
Lisa, I feel your enthusiasm. There's so much arts in motion. That's.
Arts in motion.
We'll move on. The request for future meeting attendance travel from board members are linked in the Spark system. If you have any additional travel requests to be made or approved, please complete the state board travel request form in the Board folder and submit them to Laura and Ryan before tomorrow. Tomorrow, we will approve the board request for meeting attendance. The monthly board travel expenses is attached in the Spark meetings for your review. And the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will convene tomorrow at 9:00 AM, tomorrow morning in this room. We are adjourned.
Wait, wait. On an item that you had, and you went on down the list.
And that's relative to the request for travel?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to create some sort of process that better communicates with board members what upcoming activities there are. I think we're finding that that tends to be fragmented. I may get something at home in the mail, I may get something when I'm here, and it's already passed. So, we need to.
So, we'll work on that. Actually, we've noticed it. We've noticed it with.
Of items that are coming up.
So I'm excited, like when the arts folks are excited that you're there, but we'll work with our staff to make sure those things are coming up through.
What's happening, when?
Outstanding.
That would never happen to me, though.
And Rachel, do we need to be approved to meet as our legislative group? Does that need to be tagged onto this?
I don't know if that needs to be tagged on a separate committee meeting.
It'll already be there.
Lastly, the appraisal committee will meet for a few. Lastly, the appraisal committee will meet for a few minutes in Conference Room C, immediately following. Thank you.